Recorded, even though Pam's not here, we're recording it with, I guess Jeff's cellphone.
Hopefully it works.
Alright, so we have, Laura, you wanna explain what we're opening here today?
We're opening bids for Mill Street and Elton Township in Grand Valley. Gonna do quite a bit of work down there. The township first is going to blend and reinforce the road to make it not as steep as well, and do some stormwater changes, and then we're going to hire someone to come in and repaint and do some stormwater stuff, et cetera.
So we've-
We have a CDVG amount set aside, and we're hoping that hope is well within that.
Okay. So we've received three bids, and the very first one I'm going to open looks as though it's from IA Construction. This says-
I was like, "Laura, yes, for Christmas isn't it?"
Alright, let me read through this just a bit, so I don't say something that isn't true. Base bid sum of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
Ninety-one?
Nine, six, one, five, five. Okay, and then it says, "Security and a sum of ten percent of the total bid." Ten percent bid sum. And is there anything else I should be looking for?
We should get a small response, hopefully.
Alright, this one is from Russell Standard Corporation.
I feel like you should hold the envelope up to your head like this.
Alright. And they're coming in at seventy-one thousand, five hundred and ten.
Oh, much nicer.
What was the character's name? Was it Carmack? Or what was the character's name?
Carmack.
Carmack.
And the next bid is from Glenn O. Hobaker. As for Jeff?
You gotta hold it up. I wouldn't get you to do like free things or something.
Okay, enough silliness. There's, they're doing it for free?
Yes!
I guess you lost. Okay, looks on this page is, they didn't fill in the amount on their first page, so on the second page it says, eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty, and seventy-five cents.
I will give the bid for CDVG compliance. Make sure that you included everything, that your minority of internal business, etc. We did have seventy-nine thousand set aside, so.
Okay, cool.
Don't be coming in with any change orders, but. At least we have enough. Sometimes you can't. Here's what we have enough.
Right, and the lowest bid then, obviously, was-
Unofficially.
The parent.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Take off now.
Skip out.
Thank you.
Sure.
You guys have a good day.
Thanks for coming, thank you for having us.
Talking to you soon.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Laurie. Oh, you forgot one.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Do you just wanna- Those are the engineering bids.
Oh, okay. I didn't know we were opening more bids.
Yeah.
Oh, for your-
For the county engineer.
Okay, alright, so.
Obviously, we're not gonna be able to go through all of them.
So are we sure they're all received?
Today, was today the last day, or were not actually?
Today was the last, well, today was the last day, but I think that it's with the idea that if we didn't feel like we got enough quality bids, that we would extend that one, so.
Okay, without Pam here, though, are we sure we have all the bids out of the mail?
I sifted through everything, so, I mean technically, if they were gonna bid on it, it should be an envelope of some. I went through all of her mail, so.
They sealed this one up tight.
And if there's one missing, someone can contact us, we'll review it, or get another copy of it. We're not, we're not under the same restraints as the CDVG or-
This bid is from Stifler McGraw and Associates.
Look at that, they even took my pictures.
Pretty smart.
Very nice, very nice. So let's just open these, and then we'll take time to review them later.
There's gonna be a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot to look at.
Well, they, I mean, it depends, they give rates. For the type of work that they would do. And like, if you go in the back, it has different rates for different types of work.
Well, this one just says, "Compensation for attendance of regular special county meetings is seventy dollars per meeting." And consultation with county is provided at no additional cost. Will serve as one county's engineer on an as-needed basis, there's no fee to retain our firm. Compensation for all other work will be on the basis of actual nan-hours charged to this specific task or assignment. And then there is a list. Alright, so move on. The next one is from Dice and Holmy Engineering of Edinburgh. And I'm really not certain I'm saying their name correctly. That's what I was gonna, I was impressed by that, I was like, "God!"
I'm gonna give this to Matt.
Sure. I wasn't gonna keep it, I was just looking.
Yeah, no.
I don't need it for any reason.
I didn't put any events pictures on here, I don't know. I haven't decided yet, but that was a positive or negative.
Yeah, these are the guys that work with the Glade Township.
No charges for phone calls or fax. Time and travel and mileage, they will bill for. And there is a fee schedule attached as well. This is from E and M Engineers and Surveyors of Brad. And they have a fee schedule attached here at the end as well. Two pages of fees. Alright, and that's it for those bids for the engineering firm. However, our chief clerk has been away from the office for a little over a week, and in case we did miss something, we certainly will include that in our consideration. Alright, anything further? We talked about, alright, okay. We don't have an agenda today, so we're just gonna kind of wing it. I know we're waiting on someone to do a presentation, so we can start with projects, anything you're working on, meetings that you might have gone to.
Well, so this is the end of the quarter, so thirteen weeks ago, we had talked about what we're gonna try to accomplish in the first thirteen weeks, and well, actually, really, we put everything we're doing in the year down, and so from my part, we did knock out the eye tracker maintenance thing that should be up and running. I haven't actually tried it since it went live with everybody else, but.
I talked to Matt about it on Thursday.
Yeah.
He's getting regular stream of stuff. I know 911 went through and basically logged every single crack in every wall of that building up there. Matt was not impressed with that.
I'm not surprised.
We put in a request for light bulbs and gas change.
Yeah, no, he's been doing-
It worked, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the good thing about it is, particularly if everyone in the maintenance department is out or something, they, we can log into it as well, so Pam and the commissioner has been allowed access to it, so we can help out in that situation. And the best part of it, of course, is that everybody goes to one place, rather than trying to catch the guy in the hallway, leaving a message or something like that.
So it's very similar to our IT software?
It is, yep.
Our ticket program?
Yep. Has Matt overhaul, is pretty much complete, sands a bucket of gravel. And then the long-term capital and economic plan, let's talk about that after the guy from DCD comes and talks. And then the phone system, I cross it off, you'd notice, hasn't been implemented in the courthouse, but the plan's in place, so I think the part for the commissioner's office is pretty much done. It's just a matter of IT falling through. And I've been so pleased with what they've been turning up so far in terms of, I assume fiscal had a hand in this as well, but they've been finding, you know, internet services and stuff that we're not really using, getting rid of phone lines that are not getting used much, and getting rid of those.
Right.
Just, and just overall.
Saving us a lot of money overall.
Absolutely. I mean, and since we have business lines calling from the courthouse to the jail, for instance, was costing us money, and and that will not be the case going forward.
Right, yeah.
I'm pretty happy with that project.
Bill's done a great job.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, so we're still working on the incubator business accelerator, I mean, should change the name. And that is at the point now where, is the ARCAT thing has been applied for through WCDAs, and they will be, I assume I'll be presenting on WCDAs behalf, but we'll be presenting something in Harrisburg in the next couple of months. We'll continue on with eye tracker, implementing more things. Colby has done a good job of uploading a bunch of other forms that we talked through. Someone else, I guess, is gonna have to pick up the mantle on actually implementing them. My thought would be, the maintenance was kind of the most pressing thing, so now that that's out of the way, we'll maybe do a few of the HR-related forms at the same time, and so we don't, we're not inundating people with emails. They're pretty much done, it's just a matter of testing them out, making sure that they pass the questions we want. School resource office, you know what, we're reading the school district on Wednesday.
This week, yeah.
Yeah, so Wednesday, so we'll be able to talk about it then, I don't know. We haven't grabbed a number yet.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I have not told Pam to put that back on our agenda or anything, so we need to talk to them about that.
Right, we'll bring it up on Wednesday.
Okay.
And it's building, the roof should be, they should be starting it late this week, so the next couple of weeks, we should have a roof product. And then hopefully domestic relations move back over there, that'd be great.
What is the timeframe for that, do you know? Like, can we move them back in there now without the roof being done?
So, from my perspective, yes, but they say that they're, they still smell of moldy smell over there, they give them headaches.
Okay.
Our hope is that when they replace the roof, they will find, now, mind you, we've done testing for liability purposes and have not found anything.
Right.
Well, this was, the testing was done in the fall, and they found a bunch of tree spores and stuff, you know, that were late to fall, so.
Okay.
It didn't feel like that was something to deal with.
Well, the reason for me asking that question is, in July, we're gonna have doe girls coming in, and right now, District Justice Carlson is occupying that space. And if we're going to need to look for another space, we're gonna have to
Right.
probably use the break room downstairs unless.
We definitely, definitely.
The contract for the roof says that they will have it done a hundred and eighty days from when we signed it, which is the end of April.
Okay.
So the roof will be done in the next few weeks.
Alright, great.
I'm, I'm not sure if it was a misunderstanding or not, but they are prepared to move back April 26th. I talked to Linda Kreitzer the other day about that, and April 26th is also the deadline date that Bill Gallagher has, that his phones are over there, whatever changes he has to make have to be up and working, so.
Yeah, that's what he told us, they was that they weren't gonna do it there. I mean, if it's done by then, I'll be doing cartels down the street, but I'm not gonna hold my breath.
But I think Linda's people are packing and planning on that as a hard date, so if that's not a hard date for them, somebody might need to let them know, because they, they seem to, she seems to be saying there's preparation work, that they can't just be told today that they'll be there tomorrow, that it's-
They're prepping with the idea that it's gonna be the end of April, yes.
And Carlson's office as well?
Yeah.
As for the room with the doe girls, those are the dates also for Dresha and Malecki, and that's the room Dresha and Malecki normally uses too, so.
In July, or June?
July, remember, they, they changed it, and they're doing two, two weeks in June and two weeks in July. I've not been told what weeks. I'm assuming it wouldn't be the first week of July, 'cause 4th of July is somewhere in the middle of the week, and they're not gonna come for a day and leave and come back.
Maybe we could put Dresha and Malecki in here.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you come up, maybe the jury.
They can be there, I mean, we're never-
They're supposed to be in a, the, the only problem when we had them in here before is, they're supposed to be in a confidential room where they can work and have their, their papers undisturbed. They left and came back, and Pam had bundled everything up and taken to her office, and we're not supposed to do that midway through there. And, and it was a fact that they were in here, but then the commissioners needed it for something, so she just cleared it off and put it in a box in there. Not that she did anything wrong with it, but that's just, we're not supposed to do that to their work, so.
Okay.
There was some, yeah, there was some-
We could potentially send this in the law library. That's an unused room largely.
Okay, I mean, yeah, and they'd be undisturbed there.
Yep.
For the most part, so. Welcome, Ed.
Thank you.
I believe in my former role with our state representative, I used to call you often. And so we've spoken on the phone many times. It's nice to finally meet you.
Thank you, it's nice to be here.
Well, we were just going over what Dennis, taking most of the projects we want to accomplish in 2017, and we're kind of breaking it into quarters, trying to accomplish certain ones in the quarter. So we were just going over the last quarter and what we accomplished. One that's coming up in this quarter is long-term capital planning, a two-year, potentially looking into a two-year budget. You know, a lot of the things that we are aware of the early intervention doing as well, so multi-year planning, like implementation plan, financial analysis, forecasting, that sort of thing. So we're very excited to hear what you guys say. Your background, at C cap on Saturday or Sunday, there was a DCD, well, excuse me, there was a community economic development committee meeting, and I sit on that committee, and, help me with me, Martina.
Leadeth Kevin.
Yes, came and spoke to us about the early intervention plan among several of the projects that they're doing. And so we got on the phone on Thursday or Friday, 'cause I was very excited about it. She asked Ed to come up as early as today in order to tell us more about it. So I'm really keen on doing it, and if you can manage it, but I wanted to have Ed come and tell us a little bit about the background of the project, and potential costs and that sort of thing.
Great, well, thank you for seeing me, and I apologize for being late.
I don't know.
I, Marita called me in Friday and said, "Can you be in Warren on Monday?" Or actually, I guess it was Thursday, and I, I actually have a meeting scheduled with her on Monday, and I said, "Marita, I'm supposed to meet you at Harrisburg." But anyway, we switched it around, and it worked out very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, at the Warren secretaries meeting last week, I had mentioned to Dan Blots that, that we had this program, and it's, it's a good program. In fact, I'm gonna talk about it at the call meeting Wednesday night, too. Early intervention, and it's a terrible name. It doesn't apply anymore. It used to be for municipalities and counties that had financial problems, and that we're heading into Act 47, which is the act that authorizes the stress laws where the state comes in and oversees all the operations. That's, that's been expanded. Now includes any municipality. There are some municipalities that are very financially solid, who have taken advantage of the program. The, the idea, the gist of it is that you hire a consultant, we give you a grant to do part of that. The consultant, the thing that we require is that the consultant do a five-year analysis of the municipality they're working with, both forward and backward. They'll look at what's happened in the past, and they'll give you a projection for the next five years. That in itself has a lot of value. It lets you know some, you know, I, I used to be in county government, and you, you think that you have a pretty good handle on things, but sometimes somebody from the outside can take a look at things and, and pick up on things that are right in front of you, because of the things you do every day. They're not as obvious to you as someone who's coming in and, and only looking at those kind of things. You have a lot of other things on your plate.
You're a former commissioner, right?
Yes, sir.
I remember, which, which?
Lawrence County.
Lawrence County, I remember you saying that, yep.
Yeah, and I, I enjoy that people were good to me. Being a commissioner is a good thing, you have an opportunity to do a lot of good things. If you're, if you're decent, people are pretty good to you. I think I was, but there are some who might not agree with that, I guess, but. But I've been with the state about ten years with DCEG. The, the agency that I work for, and Marita's the deputy director, is the governor's center for local government services. And theoretically, that's the only thing that we do is work with local governments. Now, in some areas, you know, this, you've probably heard about the Cracker plant that's coming to Beaver County. So I'm kind of getting involved in other things too, because there's so much going on there. The governor and our secretary is very interested in working with them, so I can kind of spill over into other areas, but my specialty is still local government. On, on the early intervention plan, the way it works is that we would give you a grant. We would give you at least fifty percent of the cost of the program. Sometimes we do a little better than that. I, I can't make any promises on a local match, but I would encourage you to request a lower one if you, if you put in the application. If you say you're gonna put up fifty percent, then that's what it is. If, if you say you only want to put up twenty-five percent, we may say, "We're sorry, we can't do it," but on the other hand, you may get that. And, and I'm not assuming that you're going to apply, I'm only saying if you do. You would hire a consultant that would come in, and these, there are, there's a list of consultants that we have that are pretty good. If you're not required to use anyone off that list, you can use someone of your own choosing. The only thing that we do is we reserve the right to say that we don't believe that consultant's qualified, and we're not going to fund that. And that kind of gets you off the hook anyhow, because in a lot of cases, there are folks that, that may know you and may not be qualified to do the early intervention, but they'll call you and say, "Come on, give it to us." So, so it's helpful with a lot of municipal officials that we can be the bad guy, and, and you know, say that, that's, that's not one that we find to be acceptable. But I, I don't know that that's how, it hasn't happened with me. There have been some municipalities that have hired consultants that are not on the list that we supplied, but they were being qualified, so we had no issue with them doing that. Usually, if you decide to go ahead with it, the way the process works is you issue an RFP. And, and I can give you a sample RFP. You would, you would have to go through and, you know, put Warren and put your own issues in there. But, but the thing that our RFP has is, it, it talks about doing the five-year financial part. But there's a whole lot more that you can do with the early intervention program, and you can think of those things that you'd like to see looked at, looked at. A study of your operations in the courthouse, a study of economic development-type things that you'd like to do, countywide. We can, the, if you get the right consultant, they can help you do those kind of things. And when you do the RFP, you would, you would issue it to whoever you see fit to send it up to. They'll give you a proposal. And, and it's kind of, it's, it's not, it's not like a bid document. It's something that you send out, that when your consultants come in, you, you can manipulate what you want to do, you can tell them things that may not be on the RFP that you thought about later, that you want to see them look at. Go to do things that you may want to consider looking at that are in your RFP. And, and once you come upon one that you like, then you'll firm things up as far as what they're going to do. They'll give you a price, but it's, it's normally an hourly price of their, their staff. A lot of them have in-service in-house folks, a lot of them use other people that work for them part-time. You know, in, if there's a, I don't think you have a county police department, you have sheriff's department. If you'd like to have that evaluated and their operations, they would probably have someone who's has expertise in that area, that they would bring in, either a former sheriff or someone who's familiar with, with law enforcement. So, so essentially, it's, it's anything you want to do outside of the financial part. And the really neat thing about the early intervention program is, once you do the first phase, there are recommendations that will be in that phase. All those recommendations are grant-eligible for a second phase of early intervention. I, I think that's the best part of it, is that not only do you get the initial study, you get the initial information, but your consultant will, the recommendations that they make, you can apply for a second grant. And whatever match you get in the first grant will be your match. And the second grant too, those things will be funded fifty percent. City of St. Mary's is on their third application. They have a woman there, Tina Grazieanni, who's, who's very sharp, and, and she knows how to get money out of us.
Would you mind telling us a little bit about what they're using the grant for?
They're, they are, they rewired their city hall. They updated all their IT stuff, their, you know, computers, and I'm, I'm not the greatest person computer-wise. I have two cellphones, I have a state cellphone, that's a fancy one, and I have a little flip phone that I know how to use, so. But, but they're upgrading all that stuff, they're getting cameras and computers in their police cars. Most of their stuff is, is technical-type things. But their, their second one is getting all new computers and, and a new system and all those kind of things that you need to make computers work. And then the third one.
Wanted to ask a question. We had just asked, the commissioners had just asked for requests for quotes from an engineering firm, because we're aware of, of a lot of structural things around here, building maintenance and whatever that they want to take care of. Is this something that it would be at our advantage to hold off on if we were going to win this plan, because possibly the fee for these engineering, if we did it after going into DCEG, would be approved and, and possibly paid for through that? Whereas if we start this before going into that, it might not be?
Yeah, anything that you contract
Okay.
before you have the contract with us is not eligible.
Okay.
You'll have a three-year window that the grant covers, that the contract covers. Things that are, that are paid for within, not necessarily paid for, but delivered within that three-year window are eligible. Anything that you do in advance of that is not. And, and that engineering work would probably be eligible.
Okay.
Sorry, I hated, hated to throw a wrench in anything that might slow that down, but if it's, yeah, if there's a chance that it's gonna do something.
If we apply to be a part of the program, how long does the process take?
You mean, how long does the study take, the initial thing, until they give you their finished product?
To, this is to the point of the junior's trying to make, is, is okay, you're saying that there's grant opportunities for, say, like, engineering, design, development work. How long in the process do you have to be, or how long is the process to get to you to that point where you can make those requests?
Okay. There's the, there's money available right now, and, and we're on sort of an accelerated pace to move it up. The reason being, the state's budget ends the end of June. The comptroller stops, or whoever, you know, the attorney general reviews these things, the other general reviews them, and the legal department writes up a contract. Mid-April, they stop doing that, because they have to get everything caught up with the budget here. If you were to apply right now.
This week.
You would- You would be able to get into the program in this year's funds. If, if you do not apply real quick, and, and the first of July isn't really that far away. It, it would not be processed until the first of July. Usually it takes, well, Maria's walking these things through because there are a lot of them that are coming in right now. The city of Warren has an application in. Little Weetland Rowan Mercer County has an application, Beaver County has an application. And, and she's pushing all of those through. If, if you were to, and this is a regular public meeting, I mean, I know it's your work session, but this is also a meeting where you can make motions and things like that.
I think we can make an informal.
And then, when, when is your regular?
Wednesday, Wednesdays are-
Second and Wednes, or second and fourth Wednesdays at each other's place.
Yeah, if, if you were to authorize the application, and, and if you put in the application, you're under no obligation to follow through. But, but you do in the application, excuse me, application, you do have to have a resolution approving, filing the application. And you have to have the commitment that if you follow through on the application, that you're willing to put up whatever your-
So you're saying, so we have the application, we have the resolution, we get that in, in a week, two weeks? Like, so what would be the timeframe to where we would get down to brass tacks of either being approved, not approved, and then moving forward in the program?
To, to where you're on your contract?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to say off the top of my head, about six weeks.
Six weeks, okay.
It may be a little bit longer because, like I said, there's a whole lot of them that are coming in right now.
Oh, yeah.
You know, in January and February, it's, it's quick. In March and April, they're really brought down. So that it may take a little bit, but that's, that's what we do.
You mentioned Beaver County, and I happen to be on the committee, a committee with Commissioner Eglie of Beaver. And she had nothing but fantastic things to say about the program.
Well, it's the same, yeah, and the same with Jefferson County. We've met with Donna Jefferson. They were in trouble in 2004, and they got a part of this program, and they're very financially sound now.
And she was, Commissioner Eglie was saying that they did this this year, or, I mean, 2016?
Beaver?
Yeah.
Right now, they just got their contract.
They just, okay.
And, and they're gonna apply for a second one almost immediately. Beaver County, with the Cracker Plant going down, they're, they're getting a lot of attention. And, and the state is, from the governor on down, is doing everything they can to make sure that that thing is successful. Infrastructure, they, they have displaced a lot of people having jobs there. The plan itself is, is gonna have six hundred jobs, which in itself is nice. But there are gonna be a lot of side things developed, plastics plants and all those kind of things. So it's anticipated there'll be a lot of people working there. The two things that, that we're trying to help them get done is make sure there's housing and make sure that there are people who are qualified to take those jobs. Beaver County Community College we're working with to, to set up programs. And, and some of these things are gonna be funded through the county's EIP program. So they're getting a sizable grant. Because they, they have a lot of things that they're going to be spending on. We're, we're trying to help move that along. That's why I mentioned that, that I do things other than local government now. That's one of the things I'm helping to facilitate that process. They have a partnership group of business people that are trying to put their heads together. And they're all smart people who know what they're doing a lot more than I do, I guess.
There's gonna be a ton of side and support businesses that are gonna be generated as a result of that?
Yeah.
And counties surrounding the area, it's gonna be a huge undertaking, so.
Yeah, we, we expect it to stretch out to Lawrence County and down to Washington County. Lawrence County has a committee that consists of, well, the committee is the commissioners, but they've assigned the responsibility to their planning department. And, and the mayor of the city, Newcastle, Newcastle very good. Her title isn't city manager, but she might as well be because she does the things city managers do. She's chief financial officer, she sits on that group. And, and they're moving forward very well and taking advantage of things that the state's gonna provide for that area. It's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm really interested in presenting it. So the resolution, I assume everything's kind of formed? We just have to fill in some blanks?
Yeah, we can give you a form, but it doesn't have to be anything fancy. Essentially, what it needs to say is, whereas we recognize that the state has an early intervention and makes grants available, we authorize whomever you have the application, to file that application. And we will set aside blank number of funds as a local match. And again, if you don't move forward with it, you know, that's, you don't have to. You can go all the way up until you get the contract. Once you sign the contract and send it back to the state, then there's the commitment. But again, you're, you don't necessarily, your consultant is going to send you bills based on what they do. And you have the ability to tell them at any time, "Stop. We're not happy with what you're doing. This isn't what we expected. Don't send us any more bills." So, you know, it's not a, it's not like a construction project where you have a contract to build a building. You give them the money and they build it. You pay these folks as they-
So what you have here, is this an explanation of the problem, or of the program?
These, these are the guidelines, and I, I apologize for not putting out more copies.
Oh, that's fine.
It is online.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, great.
And these are, these are also some papers that go with the, the guidelines. I, I should've brought a half dozen copies.
That's fine. We'll just pass it around.
But I was kinda running around at the last minute. My wife, my wife's bowling horn. I'm a terrible bowler, but I still hit the state tournament because the other guys aren't really playing.
Well, we have your contact information, so.
You said you're coming up on Wednesday?
I'm, I'm gonna be here Wednesday, the call meeting.
So I think we may contact you, like, as a follow-up for any other sample information that we might need in order to kind of move through the process.
Why don't I just go ahead and mail you the sample RFP and the list of consultants in a few minutes?
That'd be great.
Send them to you?
You can kind of talk through this. Thank you.
If I can give it up.
We'll mail it out.
Bring it up on Wednesday. We'll be at the car, great?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just bring it up on Wednesday.
I might say we'll be at the car on Wednesday.
The, the other things that, that I'd like to mention, if I may, is Rick Valala is our deputy secretary. And you may have met him at CCA. Rick's a good guy. He has roundtable meetings, and he's had them throughout the state. And he's gonna have one in Warren County on the twentieth of April. And, and what it is essentially is, we, we invite local government, elected officials, and appointed officials. And Rick will come, and if you let him know, he's a pretty lucky guy. He'll stand up and say, "Hello, my name's Rick Valala. I'm the deputy secretary. I live in Lock Haven." And, and then he'll tell you a little bit about his background. And he'll tell you about some of the projects and the projects, services that we provide, different programs. We have our grant programs and our peer assistance programs and all those things. And he'll spend about fifteen minutes doing that, and then he opens it up for discussion in the group. And Rick, Rick is the guy who approves all the grants, all the monies he's willing to give you, you know. So he's a good guy to know. And he's very sincere and follows through. And a lot of people bring grapes above the state. There are things they're trying to get done and they're not able to get them to move. And after talking to Rick, suddenly they start moving. And, and he's good at his work. He follows through. So if, if you guys, you would be welcome to come.
Do you have more information on the roundtable?
As soon as I talked to Dan last, Dan was going to, I think it's going to be at the Yon'sville Municipal Building at six o'clock. But.
I wonder if that's the municipal meeting, that they're having like a annual thing?
I don't have that on my calendar or something.
Is it the spring conference?
PSET thing?
No. I think we got an invitation to it, or I got an invitation to it.
I'm kidding you.
Because there's some municipal thing like that. I'll share it with you if I have it.
By the way, while you're here, can you speak a little bit about the, the classes that you all are putting on? I think it's not the path thing, is it? T-day Training Hub? You have weekly trainings or you make, you have in the past, you may start up again. Don't worry.
We, we do a lot of training. We have a guidance who's in the same office that I'm in in Pittsburgh. We train the auditors and municipal secretaries, all those kind of things. And we do, we do annual training for the elected officials. We do that through PSETs. We do training for borough officials. There, there are a lot of training programs. I think PSETs, let's not PSETs anymore, it's municipally, I think has the contract with DCEG to facilitate that stuff. But a lot of our guidance would, would do the actual training. But as far as weekly things, I don't know much.
All right, thanks.
But I, I do tell you, any excuse to come to Warren County is a good one. I live in Slipper Rock Township in Lawrence County. There's three Slipper Rock officers, two Butler and one Lawrence. Not good enough. If, if you'd like more information, if I can be done with it, please give all of our-
Well, I remember when you guys stopped up last year and we talked. And we had talked about this program, and it sounded very interesting at the time. And just had a lot of the things going on. But I think, I think this sounds like something that's well worth, if you have to.
It, it's a good program, Commissioner. I, when I was with Lawrence County, we did the EIP. And I, I have to tell you that it wasn't, you know, they could've taken out Lawrence and put in Warren, or take out Warren, put in Burks County, just sort of a cookie cutter kind of thing. We don't accept that anymore. We tell the consultants that you're gonna tailor your program to, you know, if you want us to recommend you or if you want us to not recommend you, you're gonna tailor your program to that county. You're gonna listen to what they want. You're not gonna go in and tell them what they want. Although sometimes they do that too, and it's helpful. But your, your study is going to be for that county, for that city, or that borough. And it's gonna focus on their needs, and it's gonna have a result of good things. And, and if that doesn't happen, then you go on our-
Careless.
Bad list. And I'll tell people, "Don't hire them."
Understood. Personally, I think you can expect an application from us. I think if I'm reading everybody correctly, and you said you can potentially get reimbursed up to ninety percent? Between fifty and ninety percent?
Well, the ninety percent is difficult. That's, you really have to be in pretty dire financial straits to even get a ten percent match.
If I send a picture with like my elbows with holes in them, some issues will have to.
What do we need to do?
Oh, you're gonna shove up my hair? Picture me sleeping under my desk.
Marina's the one who makes the decision, and, and I have to tell you. And I, I like her a lot. She's my boss. She drives me nuts sometimes, but is this me?
Yeah, or this is.
But she's really good.
She probably fell asleep way before this, if she was watching.
But she's the one who, who really, I have to sell the local match to. But, but there's a lot of money in the program right now. And, and, you know, I'm, personally, I, I take a pretty conservative point of view. But this is a good program, so I'm trying real hard to move the money up. Because I want it to be funded again next year to the same level.
Well, and from what I've seen is, is that over the, once the program starts, it actually saves the county money because it's making better financial decisions. I mean, there, there are several people that we've talked to in various counties where, you know, it sounds like, "Oh, you're getting another consultant, and you're doing all this stuff." But, but honestly, the decisions that they make save them enormous amounts of money over the stretch.
You'll, you'll get whatever you put into this back. At least threefold, probably more than that. You know, a lot of times, I'm not saying that you guys do, but sometimes you'll get studies that go on the shelf and gather dust, and they never get opened again. This, this, some guy, you've probably seen that.
I have one with this.
This is my dad's.
I just posted it off.
Tell me while you're here.
This, this is a good living document. But it actually has good stuff in it that's useful right now. And, and it's not out in the sky. It's not ridiculous, things that, that sometimes folks will try and tell you that you should do. It's, it's a lot of common sense. It's a lot of good, solid advice from folks who have had the opportunity to book a lot of different situations, and it develops some pretty good, pretty good ideas. So I, I, hopefully I'll look forward to seeing your application. If there's anything you need, please follow.
Did you say something about a deadline mid-April, April?
There's, there's not an actual deadline, but the longer it goes, the less chance it's going to be processed this year. I, I know that Maria's working very hard to get the ones that we're getting right now through. And, and if we get one from you, she'll work very hard to get it through. If it comes any later than three or four weeks from now, I, I would say it's probably not going to make it in this year's funding round. So there is emergency.
She pushed us very heavily to get the application in the next two weeks, I think it was.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons I was glad that you could see me today and rearrange my schedule yesterday.
We appreciate you doing that.
Well, I, I like coming to Warren. I stopped at Beef Jerky Place.
Oh, yeah. Never been there, actually.
It's good. It's good stuff.
My daughter loves that place. She's there a lot.
Is, is there anything else that I can answer for you or?
I think that's the most immediate thing on the horizon here. I'll look into those classes again a little bit more in depth.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I can find out. I should know.
You know, well, I think she said that she would send, when it opened back up, which should, could be the fall, she'll send us something. So not to worry about it right now. I just thought it'd be a good opportunity to tell the press more about it, but they can wait till fall.
I, I don't know a lot. Can I ask you to write my cellphone on the back of this card?
Sure.
It's seven two four. Did I give you the card? Seven two four, six seven four, ninety seven ninety one. That's one I use. When I got my state phone, it would ring, and I hit that telephone thing, and it wouldn't answer. And I couldn't figure out why. One of the young folks in our office said, "You gotta touch it and slide your finger in." You've been the same thing for that.
Yeah, I didn't know about sliding.
You know, my grandkids could probably figure out how to use it.
So eligible uses of the funding are pretty liberal?
Yeah, you know, they're, they're not gonna recommend that you buy a new truck, and we would fund that. But things that are going to save the county money, things that are gonna help create efficiencies, things that could create jobs in the county, those kind of things are all very favorably looked at. And then the, the consultants will also have some in place, one each is.
And you have a list of those? Are they included here?
No, they're not. I'll, I'll, you know, I'll bring it to Wednesday.
Great.
I'll bring the sample RFP. I'll bring the list of consultants. If there's anything else. You don't necessarily need, you know, normally, in, in the normal process, you send out the RFP. Then you get a price, and you figure out how much you might ask for the grant. With the timeframe being such- With the timeframe being such, uh, if, if you want to apply for it, I would go ahead and apply for it. And, and because you don't wanna wait for the R F Ps to come in and meet with those folks or you're definitely will not make it. For this year.
Okay.
As far as the amount to apply for, uh, I would recommend that, and again, you don't necessarily need to spend it all. I would recommend that you apply for, I don't know, eighty thousand dollars. And I would put it twenty five percent.
I got holes in my shoes, I'm telling you.
Again, that, that may not fly, I don't know, but I would, I would.
Well, the same numbers were told us by.
So say it doesn't fly, so there are an opportunity for us to change those figures and then.
Yeah, once, once you submit the contract, you can't change that, but we can, we can win. And, and I'm sorry, not the contract, the application. But, but I would never change your application without first sending you an email saying, we've discussed changing your application. This is what we talked about. Is this what you would like it to say?
Because if, if it was, went to fifty percent, it would be approved, but we can't approve this at twenty five. Something like that. Okay.
Would it be better to get an email to you as soon as you can as opposed to waiting till Wednesday? Cause if your meeting's Wednesday night, it's not gonna come back in here until Thursday for the three of you to, to work on it.
Yeah, I, I can send it. I'm in the office tomorrow.
That'd be good.
Should I, I think I have your email, but should I just send it?
I could have sent it to everybody. I think planning its own may be the one that actually ended up doing this.
Do you have Dan's in the building today? I was.
He was. He was down there. Yeah. He probably still was alone. Yeah, he'd, he'd probably be down there.
I don't think it's back in once about one.
Yep.
Are they here in the municipal building?
Yeah, they're, they're right downstairs.
He's, he's a good guy.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, Dan's fantastic. In fact, uh, when you leave, maybe one of you will want to take him down there.
Sure. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thanks for having me.
We appreciate this.
Let me know how I can help.
Yeah, we're really excited about it, actually.
It's, it's fun doing this job. We don't, and Rick will say this in his presentation, I'm gonna steal it from Rick. We don't police anybody. We don't find anybody. Have any regular stuff. All we have are maps and loans and technical help.
Yeah, it's like all of the development phone without everybody complaining about everything.
We never, the only, the only grapes I get are people who call and say, how do you refer those supervisors?
Oh, yeah, right.
You like new ones. You can't care them out because you don't like them.
There you go.
And frequently it's from the spouse or whoever lost the election.
Oh, there you go.
Alright, well, thank you again.
Yes, thank you very much. We'll see you Wednesday.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Did add at least one more thing.
I'll take you down to Ben's office.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
It's nice seeing you.
Nice to see you. I thought you were here last year with information about this.
And you know, the more you talked, I realized, you know, I met you before.
It was about the same time last year.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you again.
See you again. I'm saving trip home. Enjoy the jerky.
Now you really need to stop by there.
That's good stuff. Alright, Ben has something else.
Just, yeah, there's just one more thing that, um, I wanted to bring up, which is the, um, Appalachian Regional Commission. Um, the president has talked about cutting some of its funding. And, um, so for background, the Appalachian Region, Regional Commission encompasses thirteen states. I think it slightly cuts into New York State, but we're one of the northernmost, uh, counties that's in this, um, region and it stretches all the way down, at least into Tennessee. And, um, I don't know the level of, uh, grants that, and, um, and loans and such that ARC has put through, um, to the entire region. But I, I pulled up some numbers on Warren County because I guess, you know, I'm all for efficiency and cutting some programs if, you know, federal programs are just a waste. So I wanted to give this an honest shake and actually see like what has ARC done for Warren County. Um, and so ARC is something that was set up, and I believe it was nineteen sixty five. It's been around for, you know, sixty, you know, fifty two years. And, um, our money is run through the Northwest Commission, um, which, you know, sit on that board. So I asked them to pull together some data for us on, uh, any dollars that have actually come into Warren County through the ARC project. So I wanted to list a few of them. Um, in nineteen sixty nine, the school district, um, got well over two hundred thousand dollars to help with the vote tech center. Um, in nineteen seventy, uh, we've got, um, six hundred and twenty six thousand dollars for the Kenzo Reservoir. And then another half a million, uh, the next year. And seventy seven, um, looks like we did some sort of a shelter workshop. I'm not even sure what that is. Seventy nine, um, early child development program. I believe that ended up being E O C eventually.
Sheltered workshop, wouldn't that be, um?
Oh, that could be D E I. Yeah. And that, that would be the right timeline. Right. Uh, State Hospital got twenty seven thousand dollars in eighty one. Small Business Center, uh, ended up getting fifty grand a couple of years later. Ninety five, the W C C, the W C D A, um, used fifty thousand dollars to buy that, uh, incubator out by the, by Route Six. Two thousand eight, the city, um, got a, let's see, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the downtown. Uh, and then last year, we got a hundred thousand dollars for the Trails of, Trails of Jake's Rocks. And we're applying for the exact same thing next year, or it'd be this year, twenty seventeen is coming, uh, for the same project, the expansion of the bike trails. Additionally, there were a bunch of different projects that, um, were regional ones, so like Erie, Juan, McKean, et cetera. We, we went in together. Uh, that would include ninety eight, um, the Route Six tourist lodging inventory database. P A Wilds was kickstarted for twenty thousand dollars through this. Actually, there were a bunch of P A Wilds. Looks like a hundred and twenty seven thousand over the course of ten years. It Wood Industrial Cluster. I don't know what that is. They got, uh, about just under half a million.
Where's that at?
I don't know. I mean, it's a regional project for, it must be. And then Bradford Airport, um, got some money too. Uh, so anyway, these things have kickstarted some two hundred and twenty million dollars worth of projects. And specifically, uh, it looks like Warren County specifically has gotten a couple million over the course of the last fifteen years, uh, for various projects. So anyway, it looks like it has, you know, generally good impact on this region and I would be concerned, I guess, if we cut it completely. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the Northwest Commission because this is their fiftieth anniversary. Which is something I hadn't realized until I started digging around and found that, uh, ARC was started in sixty five. Two years later, we got the Northwest Commission and some fifty anniversary. So I don't know if there's anything that we wanna do as a board to encourage continued investment in ARC. At minimum, I thought, you know, we might try to highlight the Northwest Commission as well. Uh, because it's the fiftieth anniversary and because I think that they do some fantastic work, uh, here in Warren County, it'd be great to, um, maybe sit down with the paper and make them aware of what, uh, Northwest Commission offers to local businesses, recognize the development. Um, it's largely, they're not as used in Warren County as they are in other counties. And I'm not sure why that is. Um, the projects that they have done have been very successful, but I think it might just be the fact that we're not aware of all the services that the Northwest Commission offers. I know they've come in and pitched us things before. But, you know, it's the fiftieth anniversary, so I should have maybe could extend that out opportunity. Is there anything else you think that you might wanna do with this?
So when you started telling us about this, you said something about the president.
The president did propose cutting, uh,
Proposed cutting.
As well as C D B G money. Which I find odd because, but, and I, I do and I don't. On one level, I can understand the position of the White House saying, um, it, it kinda fits into the mantra of, you know, draining the swamp and all, because people don't really know, where does all this money go? They just see, you know, our pretty faces out when we're doing ribbon cutting at the Trails of Jake's Rocks, for instance. And, um, I don't know, I mean, it, that's a big conglomeration of a bunch of different funding streams. But, you know, ARC was a major hundred thousand dollar part of that, um, in a three hundred and eleven thousand dollar project. Now, so they funded basically a third of it. And I think that, so kind of the mentality that we need to cut these useless programs. You know, I, I think it's an easy sell because people don't recognize that these programs like C D B G and ARC are having real tangible, uh, impacts on local communities. So it's, you know.
So what about our federal legislators? Are they doing, what are they doing in regard to this?
They have spoken out that we should keep this funding. But I think that they could always use a little encouragement from local elected officials that are chiming in saying, no, really, this is helpful to us.
Would it be helpful for us to drop the letter and send it to them?
Sure. It sounds like a good idea.
Do you wanna, do you want a proclamation in support of the funding?
Potentially. That's a good idea too. Let's definitely start with a letter and then.
Go from there.
See if the Northwest Commission wants to, uh, would, would agree with, you know, making a proclamation. Maybe on a certain level.
I mean, cause for, in both cases, I mean, it, it would be very detrimental to rural Pennsylvania, specifically Warren County. You know, D C D, uh, or, uh, C D B G especially. That would be hugely, um, damaging to, um, you know, our community just because of the level of work that's done on behalf of people in poverty with those funds, so. And then ARC the same way. I mean, the, the development, the amount of, I mean, you can name just sitting there, you know, four or five installations that are regularly used by a variety of people in the community that would not exist if it wasn't for ARC funding, so.
Yeah, we can definitely incorporate that into the letter.
Yep.
By identifying, you know, this, this money has been put to good use for many years now.
Yeah, and I certainly don't mean to say that I'm pushing back in against the administration in terms of wanting to make things more efficient and useful. You know, I, I suspect the federal program, there's room for improvement. I just don't wanna see it completely go away.
Well, I, I would just like to say for the record that I have no problem with you pushing back, Ben. I'm oddly behind you in that scenario. Don't know why. I just have this feeling of overwhelming support.
What did I do?
Opened the kettle works.
Alright, that's all I had.
Thank you.
I'm glad I got back.
Missed some fun stuff.
So is it possible we won't see the Trail of Jake's Rock expanded?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it, well, no, for this year, we're very confident that it is going through. Funding's all set for phase two. There's three phases.
Yeah.
And the third phase, I think, would be the one that would be in question.
Alright. Anyone else have something to add?
I got a bunch of littles that I wanna go over, um.
Yeah, I'm the only one that's talked yet, right? We're only a third of the way down.
I don't have any big federal problems I'm gonna discuss. Mine are all little problems, so. So one thing is, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that, uh, just like with the maintenance stuff. Obviously, we have the, these engineering bits, um, that, just at a quick glance, I think that even through these three, we could probably find one that would be usable. Having talked with Matt, we have a pretty good handle on the boiler situation, um, you know, and we're just waiting for this to be approved. Uh, a project that is actually moving ahead of the boiler though is going to be the air conditioning in the jail. And that's gonna be an absolute top priority because, um, as a part of my run through the jail on Friday, I got to experience what is, uh, can be described in some rooms as a blast furnace. And I, I really think, uh, and especially once you get going, running up and down the stairs, taking prisoners up and down the stairs, it's not, you know, it's not, it's, uh, um, too bad, but I mean, it's bad enough that, you know, especially if, if, if we let this go through the summer, it could, it could get, um, pretty uncomfortable there. So, uh, so I just wanted you to know that, that, uh, once we get an engineering firm and we're comfortable with moving forward, the boiler will be a top priority. The number one priority will be getting the air conditioning fixed in the jail.
So your, your recommendation is we need to approve one of these in order to at least get that?
Yeah.
Those two things kickstarted.
Yeah. And the thing is, is in relation to like the conversation we had with, um, D C D. This just approves us to work with an engineering firm throughout the year. It doesn't mention any specific projects. So even if we were to get funding through their program, um, it would be for, on a project per project basis.
Alright.
So, um, so there's that. Um, I, I'm going to be, um, contacting the, uh, Career Center. I've, I've had talks with them, but more specifically about a, a specific project, which is building benches for the bike path, bike hike trail. Which got jump started to some degree because, um, um, we, apparently there was some kind of miscommunication between us and this agency that puts benches with advertisements on them. And there's like five or six benches with advertisements on the bike hike trail and I, I kind of have an issue with that.
What do you mean there was a miscommunication?
Well, I don't, I, due to it being a public, you know, I'm tempering my, my speech. Basically, they were put there without any authorization, um, so, um, any, any official authorization. Um, apparently there is some kind of agreement floating around that I've never seen, um, related to it. So I don't know what the, the details on it are. I'm gonna try to dig that up, but, uh, you know, it's not, it's not a huge deal. I mean, the, the, you know, the, the benches are there. They'll, they've agreed to remove them at any time. It'll, you know, it's not a big deal. But, um, the big reason that there, that it was even considered is apparently Dan's had different conversations with people that have asked repeatedly for like more benches on that path. So, um, I, my immediate thought was this would be a perfect, um, project to kind of work with the Career Center on if they're interested.
Either that or the Boy Scouts.
Or the Boy Scouts, like any, any group that would be willing to work on it. I mean, I think that we would be willing to pay for materials for them to put them together and, and even install them. You know, and we can even help, you know, design them if they need help with that, but like have them just take care of the, the benches along there. And then that way, there's more benches. Everybody's happy and then they have a project that gets a, a public application.
It'd be nice to have some sort of like a group too, maybe so you can get out of the sun for a little bit. Who probably use it a lot, so you guys could.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. I think that's a good idea.
From an insurance perspective, is there anything we need to do besides report that we're changing our property slightly?
I would, I think that's it.
Okay. Do we need city permits to build a bench?
Only, only if they're in the first place.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time determining if you're angry or not. Cause your eyes are like red and you're like.
She just come back from a thirty mile run or something. Oh, okay.
It's not contagious.
Okay.
Let's see, um, the light in the front of the courthouse, I was really happy Matt got a agency in to look at it, to get it fixed. I've been getting complaints about that light not being on. You'd be amazed at how many people are aware of the lighting of the statue on the roof of the building.
We get more complaints. We did not get hardly any complaints about the tax increase. We've gotten plenty of complaints about. Put your tree and that light.
While, while you made the comment about the light, is there any, are we gonna replace that white glow that's missing out there too?
There's, it just take, it's taken some time to figure out how to replace it, I think, cause that's a unique, um, purchase. But Matt's, I'm well aware of it.
Okay.
He's looking into it, um, cause there are comments about that as well. So, um, the only other thing I wanna. So, um, the only other thing I wanted to share, I mean, there's plenty of stuff to share, but, um, oh, okay, so there's another little maintenance thing. I, I had Matt put together a sign to put next to the parking lot where that spaces with the, the angled lines, um, to stay no parking. And I'm also going to talk to the sheriff about instituting like them going out regularly checking it and, and ticketing anybody that parks in that space. And a lot of that has to do with, we've gotten complaints from, uh, well, understandably, to some extent, the, the family that lives in that house over there, they have, um, a situation where they really need to have access to that part of the yard, um, in an emergency. Um, and, and so when people park there, it blocks their access to it. And we'd really like as a, you know, kind of a good neighborly thing to just prevent people from parking in that space. So I just wanna let you guys know that.
I thought you meant the lines right now here that people park on all the time.
No, well, that's, that's an issue too, um, but, that, I'm hoping that some of this kind of stuff will fix as a part of the signage change in, in the, in the property as a whole. The only other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, is, um, I'm working on a, um, a presentation for you to, um, have you consider, um, us kind of making, uh, the county, uh, stepping up county, which is a, um, basically all it involves is a, is a proclamation, uh, that basically, um, proclamation and like a set of kind of, um, standards that we try to operate by where we're trying to take people with mental health issues and redirect them in the criminal justice system. It's a national program and a lot of different, uh, counties in this, I think there's like fifteen or twenty, fifteen counties in the state that are involved in it already. And there's more and more, and basically, uh, this ties in with, um, state funding, state programs, and a lot of different stuff. And the goal is to, um, basically make a, um, uh, make a commitment to trying to deal with, um, mental health issues with, like within the jail and some of the other areas in as proactive a fashion as possible. Uh, this is something that I researched as a part of the, um, Behavioral Health Task Force at CCAP. I had never even heard of it before until a couple of months ago, and I've just been looking into it over and over again. And, and, um, it's, it's a really fantastic program. And a lot of counties as a result have been able to reduce their costs, um, overall, um, due to, um, you know, people getting, you know, proper mental health treatment rather than being incarcerated. And, um, and, and also because there's a lot more funding streams for mental health treatment and for, um, you know, putting people in that bucket than, you know, local, you know, locking people up. So, yeah, I'm, I've also had conversations with, I'm gonna schedule a meeting with Laura McDonne, who is, um, basically the coordinator at the jail. I had a conversation with her, or I've had conversations with her about what we can do to analyze the programs within the jail and see, um, you know, how we can have a better transition from jail to the community. And then also what we can do to analyze the programs within the jail to see what other mental health services that we can offer there. So, if, I, 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 um, anyway, I was just, I wanna let you know that I'll be sending you information on it so that you guys can review it. As a part of it, I'm also trying to analyze the, the history of the jail over the past twenty years to get a sense of what the overall costs of operating the jail are, what our head count is there, the types of, um, violations that have put people in, into the jail. I'm hoping that that'll also provide some information that'll give a better picture as to, you know, the, the channels that people take in order to end up in the prison, so. That's it.
Great. Dan?
Hi, how are you today?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, thanks. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak for a few moments. I'm not here on anybody's behalf. I hope to serve all three of you in, in, uh, in what I'm doing. And one of the things I've done was I took this, uh, just this section of, of the three-section report that you guys have from twelve years ago or whatever. I am absolutely fascinated by it. Because I, I think I read it twelve years ago and didn't, because I wasn't connected and didn't understand a lot of things, I really, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But now that I go back through this report, and I've done it over and over, uh, many evenings, because to, to digest it, it is just phenomenally interesting. And, uh, I picked out just a few things that, uh, for all of you, uh, to, uh, look at. And my feeling is unless we take a, let's take a look at this and understand this report, we go nowhere. We, we go back to that, we know better than the experts and, and so on. And, and, uh, there were things that I didn't even realize that were, uh, uh, problematic, of course. But as I read this and then thought about tourism, I'm going, oh, yes, now I understand this very, very, very much. And what I, I, I think my, my recommendation would be that at some point, and if you'll allow me to come back and, and give another couple of presentations on the other parts of the report, and they'll be brief, is that we sit down and keep people in, in our community. And, and, and first of all, begin to understand that these are real issues that we must address before we can go forward. And anything else will be spinning our wheels. And just saw the highlights of it. For instance, twelve years ago, we were told that the city arrival experience is very, very, very weak. And nothing has been done about that, not, not one, uh, thing. And I've been emailing, uh, our, our city manager in regards to this, and also have a contact at the refinery that I hope to speak to and see, uh, if, if they can't, uh, I'll take a look at doing some different things to make that entry. Lack of access to assets. Uh, we have, uh, uh, farming, people are very much interested in farming, but we have, we have no way of, 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 uh, of providing a tour of any kind. And the same with our beautiful historic homes downtown. So people come into town and they don't, they don't have any access to these things, uh, or any information. This, this is an interesting point. The community has more nostalgia for its assets than is willing to share. In other words, we who live here love everything about our community, but we don't understand how to share it. We love our dam, and we love our forest, and we love our beautiful town and our homes, but we just don't seem to be willing to share it. And I thought that was pretty interesting. Festivals are important, but yet when you look back over the last twelve years, how many of those we've lost? The list goes on and on. What was the one that used to open up with the dam up there? The, uh, the, the one that opened up the spring in the dam is now gone. Uh, Rimrock, was it? Rimrod Festival?
I have no idea.
Yeah, it was, and that one's gone, and, and on and on and on. And, and so we must take a look at that and say, why, how did we lose all these festivals? And major key assets, of course, we know them to be Allagana National Forest, Kentsu Dam, Elgin River, downtown Warren. Again, magnificence, as magnificent as they are, that magnificence is not enough. They must be able to be, uh, an experience for tourism. And, and they're not. There's, there's, when you think about great tourist areas, we have no signage, we have no support, we have no nothing. We just have these magnificent assets. And, um, again, I don't know how we can begin to solve that, other than sitting everyone down and understanding that it's an issue. That, that, uh, these assets are there, but we're not doing enough to market them or, or signage and whatever. And the other thing too, that we'll get to here, is about the lack of support. So the other key thing that, that I, I think is just absolute to understand is our usage. Eighty percent of our usage in this area is from four local counties. And that's so important because it shows that we're not driving people in from outside of those four counties. But it also tells us that they're the least lucrative of tourists. And so that explains to me why my shop doesn't do well, because these, we don't have lucrative tourists. These tourists are basically camping, hunting, and fishing. And, and, uh, uh, again, because there's no other attractions out there or services or support to these magnificent things that we have, we don't draw other people into our county. So the tourism we have is generating low dollars. And, 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 uh, uh, that's, that's absolutely key. Uh, take a look at the dam, lack of amenities and support. You go out there and there's nothing out there, absolutely nothing. City of Warren, all historic home tours, week arrival experience, lack of restaurants and nightlife. Now David, uh, from the city spoke to me about that too, about the fact that on Sundays, there's just nothing going on. You can't get a meal in town. I think about the old place to, to eat would be, um, uh, maybe Applebee's and, and, and bigger chains like that. So we as downtown business owners, uh, and the city needs to address that. And here's another key statistic. We're seventh of twelfth in the Pennsylvania wilds area. And we have declined since two thousand and two. So we've actually gone backwards, uh, census report. And then the economic development strategies assume and depend upon a robust tourism and simply not justified. Because it's not fair. And last but not least, something so key is the spiral of failure must be disrupted. And if you go to those last two pages, it talks about, I can't, I can't remember that out the other report, this spiral of failures, because we keep going around and around and around. And yet we never sit down to address these very, very, very basic issues. And, um, I really think that when we take, go back and take a look at branding, why I was so negative about it is because branding won't do a darn good of anything until we address this. And again, I would recommend that if you'll let me come back again with the other parts of the report and very basic, uh, points like this, but sitting down with Jim Decker and Dave Sherman and, and certainly the three of you and, and, and say, are, are we ever going to be able to address some of these things? Or, or, or are we thinking that, that, uh, that we're wasting our time here? Because tourism will never be what it's supposed to be until we address these things. And I know that we have an awful lot of intelligent people, Jim Decker certainly, and, and very dedicated people. But, and Sue Spencer would be another great person to have at the table. But we must understand what's, what's, what, what the basic problems are here. And, uh, uh, it's, it's an awful lot, but I, I do believe that, that, uh, if we look at it, there are certain things we can begin to chip away at and maybe bring in our partners at the forest and, uh, and, and other areas to help us, uh, begin developing this. But just by doing something like branding or, or these off, uh, off the, off the cuff kind of ideas, they're, they're just a waste of time and money. And we need a bigger strategy towards this, and we need to really begin to identify some of these bigger things that we're going to, uh, that, that are keeping us, uh, holding us back. One, one of the things that did talk about in there was a conference center or a resort. And that's my background all my life, and I'm gonna say that it's just never probably gonna happen. No one's gonna put up money to put a beautiful resort out of the dam because the seasonal revenues aren't there to support it. While you might have a wonderful summer, you're gonna sit there for a lot of months with empty hotel rooms, and no hotel can afford to do that. And when they talked about a conference center downtown, well, you know, bringing people into Warren for a conference, the basic problem is there's not great transportation into Warren and great roads into Warren, and that was one of the defeating things there. So I think that we have to look at these things in realistic terms and say that we will probably never see a resort out of the dam. Or not never, but it'll be a long time because we need to develop these other things in order to make that equitable for somebody to, uh, look at making that kind of investment out there. So I thank you for your time, and, and I hope to come back and present more of this. And I would hope that you all think about it and, and look at the bigger picture in it. And, and that maybe we could have a roundtable at some point and discuss these issues.
I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you coming in today.
Well, my pleasure. I like all of you, and I wish you all the best.
I remember back when this study, uh, was completed, and, uh, it was done in three different sections. And we all met down at the visitors bureau, and, and we met with the gentleman that did the study. And there was a considerable amount of money that went into this project. And it seems to be very in-depth and a lot of really good information within this study. And I think it would serve us well to use this study.
I, I do too, because nothing's changed, uh, in the past twelve years. In fact, indeed, it's gotten worse. And, and, and we're, uh, we'd be remiss in, 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 in not, not, not understanding it. And I, and I think with any report, you know, when I first sat down with it, it's, oh my God, you know, you have to greet you all and just pull out the key points. And that's what I hope to do for you, because I realize, uh, that you, you know, you have so many projects going on at one time, but, but, and I think only through conversation, by having everybody at the table, like I said, Jim Decker, Dave Sherman, Sue Spencer, everybody who has a stake in this, it's, it's helpful. Because we can start to understand it and then maybe see if there's ways forward on, on any of this, uh, and, and.
What we need is somebody that we can actually designate as the person to spearhead this effort.
Well, again, you know, they, they sort of have talked about, uh, I think one of the recommendations that killed this whole thing was deploying a czar. But that czar was not to be, uh, of the WCCBI. And, and there, at that, that very night that this was given, uh, here at the courthouse, it basically went in the garbage can because it wasn't going to be the WCCBI. And I, I'm not gonna argue that point either way. I'm just, Cindy just has a good point there that if somebody were to continue to spearhead this thing and keep people level-headed and, and grounded in the facts, I think we could begin to make progress. But the scattershot of this one doing this one, and this one doing that one, and so on and so forth, we're, we're not gonna get anywhere with it. And, and especially because we have limited resources. And, and like I say, there's no doubt we have dedicated people out there. I know them all. And, uh, but we do have limited resources and, and, but through what you're doing, even through, uh, uh, this gentleman that spoke to you before, and Jim Decker, Jeff Decker's, uh, extensive knowledge on, on, uh, on many fronts, I think we could begin to tackle this and, and, uh, one step at a time and, and, and make some net worth.
I appreciate.
Well, thank you.
You coming in, and, and I've always thought the study was worthy of looking at and, uh, actually doing something with it instead of sitting it on a shelf, like you say.
Yeah.
But, uh, I think we need to bring people together and try to figure that out.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Have a good day.
You're welcome anytime.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else?
Just want everybody to know, uh, I've got a meeting in Old City on Wednesday. It's continuing for the Summit Counties Veteran Symposium. I'll have my first meeting with the Veterans Commission on Friday in Harrisburg. And even though you're not part of the Veterans Council, uh, Ben does attend occasionally. Our Veterans Council is working on doing a county-wide veterans picnic.
Oh, that's fun.
We're hoping to do that this summer. Uh, right now it's in the planning stages. So it's not confirmed, but, uh, things are looking positive.
Sounds good.
Just know how we'd help with that.
We're, we're hoping if it works out, uh, DJ during the day, possibly a band in the evening, hot dogs and hamburgers for lunch, and hopefully a big roast in the evening.
Wow, sounds great.
Ed, are you gonna need you?
Sounds fun.
No, I can do it.
I think you just did it. Yeah.
I mean, we saw you do it.
Okay, no backing out now.
I'll, I'll make a video too.
There you go.
Alright, I guess we can adjourn.
I, I did have a thing too. Um, if I remember correctly, and I'm not sure what point it was at, did this, the contract with Maximus get signed? Are we, uh, go with that whenever it does start?
Yes.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was, but I wasn't sure, cause we've talked about it so many times. It's seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Are we going to allocate money out of?
Per department?
Out of the, um, come on, I'm drawing a blank here.
We need to make a budget adjustment.
Thanks, that's what I was trying to. Are we gonna do a budget adjustment for that? And if, if so, um, I'm not sure what section of the budget we would move it from the contingency fund to, um, I, I would, I would suggest.
Can we figure out who owns what, like?
Well, I think the problem is, is like the first year, it'll have to be just generally funded, because we're not gonna know which departments can use it the most.
It's, it's gonna come out of the county budget anyways, and what this does is allocate other funds to reimburse back, just like pension comes out of county and other funds. But what I was, either in, in. But what I was, either in, in our budget as a whole, we should move seven thousand five hundred either into professional services under commissioners or professional services under fiscal, because fiscal is going to probably be doing most of the work of, of routing the numbers on this. Someplace, we should do a, a seven thousand five hundred dollar budget adjustment for that.
But you don't wanna allocate it to the correct departments at this point?
And it will change every year, so it will always come out of one, just like, or even, um, I guess if you, well, the miscellaneous one we have in the budget actually says payroll and insurance. It's where health insurance and, and other things that way come through, so I hate to start mixing other things in that number.
It was just another consultant.
Fiscal seems reasonable then.
Under, under fiscal? Either way, fiscal or commissioners, whatever. Okay, seven thousand five hundred from contingency to fiscal. And then the other one, and I'm not sure, this might be premature, Ben and I just briefly talked about it. But, um, because of that excavation work that had to be done down at the Rouse, their budget for building maintenance down there was only three thousand dollars for the year. And they are at three thousand one hun- or, excuse me, their budget was four thousand dollars for maintenance, and they're at three thousand one hundred and ninety-four for the year. And that's because of that two thousand six hundred dollar excavation. I didn't know if at this point, if we're doing an adjustment for this, if you would wanna move a couple thousand more into that, or if you just wanna wait and see what bills arrive. On a regular basis, we have the ITU Absorb Tech bill that comes through that department. That's for the floor mats that get replaced throughout the year. And then we also have armor inspections, and my note on that says it's a quarterly inspection. I'm not even sure what that would be for over there.
Oh, the.
Over where?
They have a.
At the Rouse building.
I think they do have armor security, like.
Oh.
Key following, so it's that. It's a different system than what's here.
Okay.
I have a question. Is that the water main break that affected the Rouse suites?
No.
Okay.
Although I was curious, did we file an insurance claim on that? I don't think we did.
It wouldn't hit our deductible.
Alright.
I, I don't think, I don't know if we have insurance that would cover something like that, if it was a leak in the pipe. And, and I, and even at that, this dollar amount would be under our deductible, so.
Yeah, I think we do need to do something over, but I honestly, at this point, don't know what.
Okay.
I need to sit down with Matt and Todd and figure out what they are actually doing in this year.
Okay.
So, let's do that before we get the budget adjustment made.
So then, at the next, um, Commissioners' meeting, should I make a recommendation then to move the seven thousand five hundred from contingency? Okay, alright, I'll, I'll do that then.
Phil, do you have anything to add? You added everything. Okay. I think it's safe to adjourn now.